I think despite Angela's not being, we do have a forum for us here. So I think we'll start the union. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, since we have a forum, we're going to call the Boilston New General Union Sees the School Committee to order. Who's the chair of Boilston School? Who's going to be the chair of Boilston School tonight?
Move.
Jim.
There's the chair.
Yes. I will call the Boilston.
The board. Ed.
I'm calling Berlin.
Okay. So all the committees are then called to order. Ed, look at your agenda. And then we'll do their agendas. We have the consent agendas coming up, so we'll do it by committee.
You haven't had a policy meeting yet.
No, no, look at the consent agenda.
Okay.
Under the Rowland School Committee.
Okay, let's.
We need a motion.
A motion, yeah, I'll move to approve.
To approve. Good. I'll second this and send it over to Brian from here. Do you want to hold the vote, Ed? Because you're.
Hmm.
Hold the vote. Call the vote.
I'll call for a vote. Yes, I'll call for a vote.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move to approve the Boilston School Committee consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion for the Berlin Boilston New General School Committee? So moved. I have a second.
Second.
Second to Ed. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deborah, how are you doing?
Perfect.
All right. But we do it now.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Do we have any communications? I mean, not on where?
Nothing.
Okay. Do we have any petitions and audiences related to items on the agenda? No, I've seen that.
Hi, Angela.
Okay. We are into the reports section.
So we have a new student joining us. Nikamila is our student representative for the year. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
Do you have a report for us?
Yeah. All right. The opening day of school was on Friday, 8:25. Student Council welcomed sixth grade to score orientation as well as welcomed all 611 students on the way there. All sports started right up with boys and girls soccer, field hockey, cross country, and football. The boys' varsity soccer started out strong with their victory over Obumon 4-0 and a win over Middlesex 2-0, followed by two senior captains in Nick McGrath and Noah Dawkins. The girls' varsity soccer won their season opener against Naircans in 5-1, thanks from the leading senior captains Devon Marshall, Alyssa Kohler, Hallie Starby, and Sandy Clancy. The girls' varsity field hockey blew up in their season opener 6-1. Strong leadership from the senior captains Allison Fleming, Rachel Willey, Casey McHale. Hope to go for their third season as undefeated V championship. They have championships. Cross country has their first meet on Thursday. It was Thursday afternoon last week. Oh, no.
No, it's Thursday.
Sorry. At home against Murdock. Senior captain Carla Smith has been getting her team ready, and they are excited for Thursday. The Lions' tag football team had their first game on 9/8 against their biggest rival, Wilton. The game went into double overtime, and unfortunately, the Lions lost. Their record is 1-1 and looking forward on to Leicester. Captain senior Ryan Ma and Mike Flanagan, the seniors are Ryan Ma and Mike Flanagan. The kids are taught to take pride in sports, and they play and always show sportsmanship with it. The next big event is homecoming. It is on Saturday, the 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. The spirit of these days are drama days, 16th day, American Pride Day, dress night stage, and the color wars. The student council members always put in a lot of work to have a good time.
Thank you, Nick.
Good job.
Good job.
Yes.
Did you have any butterflies?
Yeah.
Are they gone?
Yeah.
All right. Excellent. You did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we like hearing about all those sports details. Let's go.
Good job.
Yes.
Wait, then you like breathe. Good job. Great. It looks like we're reading for CPAT.
Jessica. Hi, Jessica Melzer from CPAT. I'm the Berlin co-president. I just have a few things. Our pie sale is starting tomorrow, so if you need pies for Thanksgiving, it's a good opportunity, and it's fundraising for our scholarship for May, or June, sorry. The Square Store is open online, and delivery is going to be November 9th. We're going to be at the open houses. Or you can ask any of us, and I'm sure we're happy to help you order it. We're running our elections right now. Up for election are the Berlin co-president, our vice president, our secretary, and our treasurer. We're hoping people vote. And our last thing is, we're having a meet the experts night September 20th here at Tohonto at 7:00 p.m. And we have a lot of really great teachers and staff members who come and talk to everybody about what they do, and we're really hoping to have a good turnout.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jessica. Ah, Berlin link.
I see nobody here.
Wow.
She may still look at the old seven o'clock time.
Okay, well, if she comes, we'll give her that.
This is Kalisham, said she's going.
Jacqueline from the Boilston PTO.
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I just wanted to come tonight to talk a little bit about the PTO. I was going to start with a review of the 2016-2017 year. We did the magazine drive last fall that raised around $6,000 from the school, and we did the Race for Education, which raised $13,000. And that was for the one-to-one initiative and purchased Chromebooks and a technology card. This year, we have purchased a square and tablet for the PTO to use, so we now have capability to take credit and debit card purchases. Already, we've hosted a popsicle party for the incoming kindergarteners and parents on August 30th. And we hosted a boo-hoo yahoo breakfast for the kindergarteners on their first day of school. And we provided bracelets to the parents and the children and treat bags to the parents, which included tissues, hugs, and kisses. We gave the teachers and staff appreciation smores treats in their mailbox on the first day of school. That said, we appreciate you more than you know. And instead of doing the magazine drive this year, we've decided to do an indirect fundraising. So we have started a swag drive. And for a $45 sponsorship, you get a tote filled with either a car magnet and umbrella or a blanket and sunglasses. We're also taking $20 donations, and you'll receive a tote bag. We are also hosting the talent show on November 17th, and that will be here at Tohonto. And it's going to be a Hollywood theme with a red carpet. And we've decided to kind of promote this and get ads from local businesses and make it into a fundraiser. Parents will also be able to purchase ads to give a shout-out to their child in the talent show. And there will be a raffle at the event, and we'll also be selling the swag bags there as well. We have three assemblies already scheduled for this year. There'll be two assemblies per event for K through 2 and 3 through 5. The first one will be on November, I'm sorry, October 19th, and it's going to be with Holly Rock Entertainment, which is like a game show setup. And the questions will be a combination of health, fitness, anti-bullying, and academic. And each grade will get a chance to answer appropriate, grade-appropriate questions and be involved in physical challenges. On January 11th, we're going to be doing Johnny the K. And he is a former school teacher who cleverly and humorously educates and inspires character education through song, dialogue, and movement with audience participation and lots of excitement. And it's designed to promote the principles of responsibility, respect, and cooperation. And then on May 17th, we're having Bubbleology, and that uses bubbles to explain liquids, solids, gases, geometry, tension, and pressure. And then we also have the family dance scheduled for March 2nd, and the children are going to be able to choose the theme and vote for the theme this year. And then the Race for Education will be on May 24th. And since it's our fifth anniversary of the Race for Education, we're going to do a call room. And the money that will be raised, we've allotted to go to the specials. Sure, that pretty much sums up.
It's a four hundred bowl list.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Okay. Hi. How are you?
Great, how are you?
Very well. Would you like to talk about?
Sure, we just had our first meeting. We voted and elected our board. We had a lot of members leave. We have the names for our secretary. We just got a grant person who we haven't voted in yet, so we're excited that she stepped up and played. We ordered delivered agendas for the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. We handed out note pads for parents for dismissal and for giving out their children. We created a little pad that's easy for parents. And we give it to the kindergarten, and then we give it to new families that come in. We ordered school active news in time for the school. We sent out letters to staff and teachers for startup funds, and we processed some of those requests. We're working on three grants that we'll need for the year. We're in the process of scheduling good company for our first cultural show, which will be November. It's a play that fosters diversity and acceptance, so we're excited to see how that one comes along. And it will have some student participation, which will be great. And they will work with Ms. Denny to participate in the play, the children that are chosen. We are donating money for flower pots for the front of the building. Julie Lee and Amanda Rogers have offered to do the planting generously. And we've scheduled our book fair for November 8th and 9th. We have not scheduled our STEM or science events or any other cultural events yet, so more to come.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Stacy here. Hi, Stacy.
Hi. We have actually had two meetings. We had a meeting prior to the 6th grade orientation, so we could get organized and see how we could help out with that event. And a few of us attended to just kind of take names and inform parents about access to the newsletter, the online newsletter, and let them know that we're, some of the programs that we're working on. And we already have some new ideas about how to do that differently and better next year. We have some events happening. The senior breakfast will be coming up at the end of September. We started our annual giving campaign, which is donating however much a family can donate. There's no requirement to be a member, obviously, of the PTO. So we have received very generous donations from parents so far, and that will just kind of go throughout, mostly through the fall, but can actually go through the entire year. So that's been going really well. I spoke last night with the faculty to encourage faculty and staff to request funds because we have funds to share, and I wanted to make them all aware that the process is relatively easy. And also, if there was anything else that we could help communicate for them. For instance, we helped the nurse's office with some supplies that she needed much here. The big focus right now has been trying to get a school store up and running. The benefits would support not just the PTO, it would also be for the Booster Club, Tempo, Student Council, and also the Thurston Scholarship. So I've been working. This is Anne, who has the Berlin store, you know, been very successful and.
And two ten of children now.
Yes. So we're working with a vendor. Met with Diane last week, and we have picked up numerous items. And I think it's going to, you know, appeal to the masses, parents and students, as well as hopefully some staff, and hope to have that online in a couple of weeks. And then also have items, physical items, to purchase at open house and also in the store, you know, possibly at lunch or some evening events upcoming, you know, through the first few months of the school year. And I think that's about it. Like I said, we had a really great turnout in our second meeting. One of the members that has been around for a while said that they've never seen that many people show up. We had actually pull chairs into the room, so that's a really good sign, so I hope for it. Christie's also here. She's my vice president, so.
Thank you for both of you for coming. Thank you for your report.
Thanks.
Suzanne wants to add something.
I do. We have a family sharpen farm event also scheduled for September 30th. I forgot to mention that, but on that, our annual big off for funding, and it's just for fun, to get the community together and new families can meet each other and just have fun. So that's September 30th.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Do I have to look anyone? Because I sometimes make confused. Thank you. All right. I believe that it's your turn.
Okay. So mine's a combined report. The first thing, we just wanted to put out another reminder about NASSC conference. I know Cliff is signed up to go, correct?
That's correct.
But we don't have somebody from Boilston, so Cliff can vote for Berlin and for the region, I guess. But we have nobody for Boilston, so I just wanted to put it out there if anybody else is thinking of going to that conference. And I think a lot of times, we don't have both districts covered, so I think that's, sometimes it's hard. Bus counts, we did look at the bus ridership. We were happy to see Bob did a quick count, and we had about 75%. We found that we would have less kids on the Tohono bus coming from Berlin than we did from Boilston. So we're going to do a couple of quick checks throughout the year and keep an eye on that and see how we're doing. People personnel report, we have the coordinated program review dates. I think I told you, Dease is coming in this year to look through all of our reports. We're also coming to look at Carol's report. She's going to have to do a Title I report this year similar to this. So for special ed and civil rights and ELL, they're coming in the week of Martin Luther King Day, so that week right afterwards. So they're going to meet with all of the principals and myself coming up, and we'll go through what they'll be looking for. I think at that time, they're going to want to meet with some of the school committee. If anybody's available, the closer to time, I'll talk to you about that and see who might be around. And then we did the special ed grants. Carol had a lovely format in her report, so I copied her quite honestly. But we thought it was, we thought it was helpful for you to be able to see the difference in money that we receive in each of the districts in our grants. It's a significant difference, and so sometimes that limits what we can do if we want to do things consistently across all three districts. And I think that's probably about it.
Karen, you're going to be the point person for the coordinated review.
Yes.
Any other questions to Karen? Okay. Okay. Bob, you're on.
Okay, so I have a few items to report on. I'll start with the financial items. The first one is, I just wanted to let you, alert you to that attached in the drive is the year-end financial reports for each of the three districts for your review. Wasn't planning to go through them in detail, but basically, you can see what was budgeted, what was spent by line item. This is something we provide at the end of every fiscal year. The next item is, we have our region audit going on right now. They've completed substantially all of their work. There's a little bit of kind of last items they have to do to finish things up. Should be getting a draft report soon. And if timing works out, I hope to have that to share at the next school committee meeting. The, at the same time, we have, we have an OPEB audit going on, which is required. The requirement used to be every three years. It changed this year. We now, so we were due for one. We now will be required to do a full audit every year and a, what is called a roll-forward audit every other year. And the roll-forward basically just takes the information you provided the previous year and updates it based on some more current assumptions, basically what your new healthcare costs are. It doesn't redo your population of people that are enrolled. So these are some expenses that we'll incur, that we'll have to look at, that we didn't budget for and will have to budget for those next year.
May I ask a question about that? So this isn't the roll-forward year, this is an audit year?
This is the audit year, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a firm that is familiar with this, that we engaged. I've committed to use them for this year and next year and see how they do before we commit to do, use them any further. Related to this, I also recommend that we budget as a separate line item for the OPEB funding. In the past, it's been bundled into retiree health insurance. I will plan to budget it beginning in FY19. I think that provides more visibility during the budget process, both to the public and to us to be aware of it, what our approach has been to date. And I've actually talked to other institutions, is sometimes it's just what you have left at the end of the year and you can afford to do, and it's not really planned. We're in the early stages. We're in the third year of doing this. So I think, I think budgeting is a separate line item will be helpful. You know, and we can potentially use available funding as well, but at least to make a choice to budget. So that's something you will see in the budget this year. It won't be large, but it will at least be there as a start. We also, I also have an update on the Tohono capital project and related to that borrowing that we would need to do. So the Tohono capital project, a settlement of $300,000 from a design engineer firm for some claims we had for work performed on the project that happened several years ago. This was a long process, involved several people, and we are glad to have it behind us, I would say. With this settlement, what that means is we can now submit the final reimbursement to MSBA. They hold back funds for their share of the grant. They agreed to, I'm going to use an approximate number now, but they agreed to fund approximately 50% of the project. They hold back 5% of that until you complete the project. So we're now able to request that funding, which is $1,052,723. Now, I don't know if we're going to get all of that, it's subject to an audit, but that's what we're requesting. We expect that that will be on the December 2017 MSBA board meeting. What this means is that we will need to do short-term borrowing in November. That's when our current bond anticipation note expires. There's, there are some, we will need specifically, the school committee will have to approve the winning bid, so I'm requesting that we think about a meeting on November 9th, a separate meeting just for approval of the winning ban. That's needed before they can generate the paperwork for the bond. And then a few days later, we'll actually need signatures from the school committee chair, secretary, and district treasurer, which does not need to be an open meeting. Last year, I've asked them to, these dates I'm more comfortable with. When we did this last year, it would say I was a little bit uncomfortable with the kind of rushed timeline that we had. And I think this will put us in a better position to, in case something happens or somebody's not available to be able to react. I don't know if there's any questions on that. I've kind of given a high-level view of the ban, otherwise I'll keep going on. For transportation update, we have, the routes are stabilizing. We have some remaining requests I'm reviewing and responding to from parents. I got through, I'd say substantially all of them. There are kind of a handful left that I've asked North Reading Transportation to review. So I'll be getting back to those parents by the end of the week. And then at that point, once any changes are made, we'll repost the routes on the website. I think the routes that are up there now are a little bit, they're from the beginning of the year. We've had some changes since then. The last update will be short, the wood pellet boiler update. Just to say, it's scheduled to be online late, mid to late next week. These are kind of punchless items that they're working on. And our facilities manager, I just spoke to him this afternoon, said they're basically targeting it next week. And he will provide a more comprehensive update for the October meeting and explain it in a little bit more detail than I can do. So that's, those are my items.
That, that is certainly a good thing to hear. It's been a long journey.
It has.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about any of the items?
So this is open.
How many bids you getting, Olivia?
For the, for the bond anticipation note?
Yeah.
It goes out, we have a firm that runs the process for us. I believe last time, there was at least three, if not four, but it basically goes published publicly, and there could be multiple. But based on the last one, I think it was three or four. And we, they do all the calculations. There's multiple ways, multiple pieces. They provide a premium, they provide an interest rate, and they basically calculate what's the lowest cost of borrowing for us. It's a little bit more complicated than, than just the interest rate. So I'm hoping that we have, you know, three to four at least. And then this is to get us through the next six months. It'll be a six-month term. Then we'll have a permanent bond. We're kind of more of long-term financing, and that will be probably near the end of the year.
Okay, good. Bob has asked us to add to our meeting calendar, a meeting on the 9th. I don't know, do we need to take a formal vote to add that? I don't think so.
Add calendar, I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so. So once anyone suggests, we will add that to our calendar. Whoever's in charge of the calendar.
And I think Bob was thinking it would be a single issue to come in and vote on that particular item.
Yes.
And that's it. So very short, hopefully.
And what's the date again?
November 9th.
Nope, is that the date you were asking for?
November 9th is the date. The treasurer, who is our finance person for the, basically treasurer for the region, will be there at the meeting as well to kind of walk us through the process.
And I'm the secretary, right, for the regional?
Correct.
So you'll be shaking.
Do I need to sign it because I won't be here?
Well, we can.
We don't have to sign it that night. Are you away on vacation?
Yeah. That's why I can't make NASC this year.
As long as we have a court, correct?
No, I think we need, I will look actually, for the school committee meeting on the 9th, my understanding is we don't need you. On the 14th, we do. She'll be back. Okay. I can confirm that, because I don't think this is, I can confirm that.
Okay. If you can get confirmation on that, we can certainly address that at the next meeting.
Okay.
But for now, we're looking from the 9th and the 14th.
She'll be back.
And is the 9th 6:30?
Yes.
It can be, yeah.
We've been meeting at 6:30, so be consistent. Any other questions for Bob? All right. Who is next? Let me see. Looks like our director, correct, I mean. Yes. Now.
So including my reports, Karen mentioned is the update on grants we received to date and also grants that are still out there, we're waiting to hear back from. I wanted to bring your attention to the grant called the Efficiency and Regionalization Grant. Superintendent Extrum had asked me to bring this forward to school committee. Here is particular need for consideration. This is a grant we looked at last year, and it's a grant that would support any types of funding costs incurred in terms of exploring regionalization and moving forward toward that process. We looked at it last year. It's under the Community Compact Grant. There were two dates. You remember last year, it was the fall, and then the spring date. This time, they're only offering an opening date on October 16th and closing on November 16th. So we have a very short window if that's a need. It does run, as it did last year, with the need to have signatures from leaders and from the municipalities. So this is for your consideration. I know you have a meeting, I think, coming shortly. Yeah, so.
The difficulty with this is the same difficulty we had last time. The process is just not quite at that point where we could expect the select boards to sign on on this. So that's a concern, but we can bring it up at Thursday night's meeting and.
And also to think about what you would use that money for would be the other piece. I wanted to make you aware of it, and perhaps we'll offer it again next year if we're ready for that, but it.
What is the amount?
It doesn't say specifically what the amount. It's up to $200,000 is available. It doesn't say specifically what the amount, it's up to $200,000 is available, but I'm sure that they would not award us that much. But I don't think it would be a large sum. I'm going to say, I think we went last year for up to $20,000? I'm looking at, I think we're thinking legal fees and things like that. So I want to leave the Fidelity Investments and Carrington School Community to the principals to talk about. She's so. No, what's the name? Carrington School Community and Fidelity Investments with the principals, I'll let them talk about. Those are our social curriculum that we just launched, and Fidelity Investment Program coming.
Now, do you want to do that now?
I can go through, I can recover from the shock of that little gift from the curriculum director. I think there's somebody before us, so we can wait.
You can wait.
I could.
To your regular report?
We're there.
Okay. So you all set, Karen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Paul, technology.
Again, good evening. You have my report. Again, list of some of the things we did over the summer. Again, not meant to be all-inclusive, just to give you some highlights of some of the things that we did. Again, updating over 650 machines, updating, the first item talks about updating images, and that's basically keeping all the computers up to date, so we're not running on older versions of Windows or older versions of the browsers. So, and then pushing those out to all the various machines. Do want to highlight, also, we completed the wireless project, again, that was a $123,000 grant, most of which was federal and state money, very little cost to the district. That project included improvements to Berlin's wiring infrastructure as well. So Berlin was the oldest of the buildings, even though it was just slightly before Boylston, so the internal wiring received an upgrade as well. And I think the other main piece I wanted to, again, is thank Dave O'Darsey. Dave, if it weren't for Dave, half of that list or more would not be done, and it's also always done in a very thorough and professional manner, so there aren't mistakes made, and it's not work done, to get work done, it's work always well-done with Dave. And again, I also wanted to thank the team, because they're always very supportive of Dave and I trying to get things done, and even though it's not always easy in the summer, because we're working around programs, or empty buildings, or half-empty buildings, or when they want to get something done, and we're shutting things down. So I want to thank the Weston leadership team for putting up with our, all the work that we did over the summer.
No questions? The swipe access cards, is that for the external doors, or is it for classroom doors? What are those?
Primarily external doors.
Okay.
There will be at some point some of the internal doors, so we can section off parts of the building. But for now, it's, the focus has been external door.
Any other questions for Paul? First blush, it was a long list, you said it was the highlights.
Yeah, we want to talk about the day-to-day stuff.
Well, maybe an anecdote once in a while. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Mr. Campbell, I believe you're next.
It is indeed my turn. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. You've got my report. I wanted to focus on just a couple of things quickly in this, and then Carol gave me a little gift, we'll do that. But before that, I wanted to just echo Paul's comment about Dave, who's just an amazing guy. He is constantly present, he's constantly doing things. He's a huge asset, and he's invisible. No one ever sees the guy, because he's constantly in motion, so. Bit of a Dave thing, he's just a great man. Open house for Berlin Memorial Schools tomorrow, everybody is welcome. The event starts at 6:00. People are going directly to classes, but we're doing a lot of other things as well. We have representatives from the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts there, representative from Clinton Savings Bank, talking about student saving accounts, and CPAC, my friends from CPAC will be there to trick me into buying pies that I clearly don't need. So I'm looking forward to that. What's the cause?
I have samples too.
Samples. Nobody's my favorite. So we're looking forward to all that. Link is always, you know, a presence in our schools, so we're grateful for that. So I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow. Somebody talked about the pellet stove, so we can skip over that. But it's been a great start to the school year, and I'm really pleased the teachers have, you know, when the, when we don't have the summer school program and the buildings quiet, you really notice the presence of teachers who come in and out throughout the course of the summer. They are really a remarkable group of people, coming in, getting their classrooms set up, going that extra mile, so that everything's perfect on the first day. So I'm very, very proud to work with all of them. I'm taking the Fidelity Program that Carol has just mentioned. We in Berlin have a parent, her name is Jackie Marshall, she works for Fidelity Investments. She actually approached me last spring, they were interested in doing financial education at the elementary level for kids. It's something that they've seen and kind of identified as a concern kind of nationally, they're a national company, and they're kind of piloting this education program, and they wanted to make our district, because Jackie lives here. Kind of a pilot, let's see what we can do with some of our elementary school students. And we quickly brought in our good friends in Boylston to share the, to share the wealth and to share the experience. So they will be starting next week with our fifth-grade students, they'll be coming in once a week to talk about financial literacy. They'll be talking about income, and budgets, and savings, and checking, and interest rates, and the kinds of things that kids aren't ordinarily exposed to. What's nice for us, in addition to just the information kids will get, that background knowledge that they'll start to develop, is that it also ties into language arts, and it ties into mathematics, and it ties into civics, because those are all parts of that program. The program that they've got was developed by people who do financial literacy education for a living, so they've actually given us the program aligned to our state standards. So we're, they've done a tremendous amount of planning, it costs us nothing, and we're super excited to have it happen. And as that goes along, I'll keep you all posted, maybe at some point we can check and come in and kind of talk about how that's going. If anybody has any questions about anything about.
Any questions, Mr. John? That Fidelity Investments program sounds really promising.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great, one of those gift opportunities. Okay. Thank you, John. Mr. Thompson?
All right. Good evening, everyone. You have my report as well, and you'll see a lot of similarities, we have similar experiences in the two elementary schools, by design. We had a wonderful opening of school. You know, I always say, the most important thing, get them in, get them fed, get them home, and if you have some smiles along the way, then that's just bonus, and that's what we have. So it was a great start to the year, hats off to all the teachers who helped prepare, and to Michelle Hatum, who keeps the whole thing running, really does. Our open house is scheduled for September 19th at 6 o'clock. We also have a host of community members that come in and share their things as well. Of course, the parents' main priority is getting into the classrooms, meeting the teachers, seeing where their kids spend their entire day. This year, we've been, I've been working with the police and fire chief, they'll be, we'll be filming a short presentation, an idea that I borrowed from John, or stole. A short presentation for parents, just how to handle an emergency situation in the school, and we'll start our session with that, while we have a captive audience in the classrooms, because try to get everybody, all the parents into the gym, and they don't really want to go. So. One of the other things I wanted to share, as we presented last week on, or last month on our strategic plan, you'll notice one of the focuses was on that civic responsibility, and you know, we see that there is an opportunity right now. One of my teachers, Beth Ann Difonzo, came to me, really wanted to help out the victims from Hurricane Harvey down in Texas. So we've started a drive, we've adopted a first grade and a fifth grade classroom out in Houston, and we're sending school supplies, because they did not have the first day of school that we did up here. And they're still, they're still recovering. And I know we're, we're keeping Florida in our thoughts right now, as they're kind of struggling through some things as well. I feel like it's a great opportunity, it's really important to show kids that they can make an impact, and you know, and it can be all the way across the country, and there are kids just like them, that need help, and they can do something about it, so. I think it's a, it's a great message for kids to have. We have been on the beginning of the year assessments, it's a, you know, kids love it, they come to school, we get them in their routines, and then we start testing them. But it's, it's really important information that we gather, it sets the tone for the teachers, it allows them to plan, to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. The students that are, that came in accelerated are being challenged, and those kids that showed some regression, we're addressing right away. I want to thank Carol for my gifts. Carrington School Community, you'll also see that ties in really well with our strategic plan. Last year, Carol led a committee of parents, teachers, stakeholders from across the district in determining the appropriate curriculum for us. We did end up finalizing on Carrington School Community, which has a meeting model component to it, and it really focuses on giving kids authentic opportunities to solve problems themselves, and kind of helps teachers facilitate those conversations. The first few, first eight weeks, there's two sessions a week, where they kind of set the ground rules for what those meetings look like, and they, and they do some of the foundational work. And then those meetings continue throughout the rest of the year to address issues as they arise. I'm really excited about the program, and teachers are really excited about it. I have to say, one of the things that we spent a lot of time this summer, and even as we're going in, when we were talking about the strategic plan, is we have this great curriculum, let's not just kind of push it out there and say, okay, guys, figure it out. So we've already had Professional Development Day, the first half-day, we had all of the staff in the elementary school, and that was paraprofessionals, that was specialists, everyone was there to get the start of that program. And we've committed to periodically throughout the year, using staff meeting time to make sure that teachers have an opportunity to talk about what's working, what their concerns are, problems solved together, and we also have some other professional development opportunities down the road to make sure that we are supporting the program as it, as it goes through the year. Did I talk enough?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Excellent. Diane.
Thank you. Good evening, hello. So as my student representative had stated, that we welcomed 611 students on the first day of school, including 97 sixth graders, as well as 40 new students who throughout the summer were either move-ins to one of the two towns, or coming back to us from private schools, vocational schools, as well as some students who have been previously homeschooled are now joining us. So we're very happy to welcome all of those students. As with the elementary schools, we began our benchmark assessments over this past week, week and a half, which included not only the district determined measures in the content areas, but also our math testing, and Sally has been leading that with our students in grades six, seven, and eight. I believe seventh grade is finishing up their testing. Professional development on September 1st. Over the summer, we had the last part of our Tohoto PBIS training, which we are calling DEER, which is a tie-in from our core values and beliefs of determination, education, enrichment, and responsibility. And this initiative over the summer was the second part, we spent three days of training last year, between the winter and the spring, and we finished up the summer with the training of the leadership team. And the leadership team on September 1st met with all of the middle school faculty and staff, and presented the focus for the year for our initiative. And that focus is really teaching students about expectations of behavior in our hallways, as well as our cafeterias. Those were two of our main focus areas that through looking at the referrals that we get in the main office, those were the areas of focus. So leadership team has done an incredible job, and are now going to be using advisory time to begin actual lessons with those expectations for all of our middle school students as well. On the opening day of school, Sally and I also introduced it to the high school, because our second lunch, students from the middle school and high school share time as well, and plus, you know, walking through the hallways, so they are aware of sort of what expectations are of our middle school students. Also, we have Professional Development Day, our high school, teachers worked on the development of curriculum, but also they met with special education staff to ensure that IEPs and 504s, all that information was given to and got over with all their teacher, our teachers, so that we could make sure the first day we are up and running and providing the services that we needed to provide. And then lastly, I'm happy to report that our new traffic pattern has proven to be successful. Reminders need to be given, but in meeting with the police chief, we're happy to report that there is absolutely no backup on W70, either in the morning or in the afternoon during pickup. And it's also nice to have all of our students entering through the front of the building one central location.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, very good, thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of the leaders of this school system for everything that you've done to start a school year that appears to be very successfully taking off. And your reports this evening are very encouraging, and you should take great pride in what you've accomplished. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Angela, you're on.
I am, business items?
Yes.
Okay, so the Berlin School Committee, the first thing we need to do is vote a delegate for our MAS, MASC, M-A-S-S joint conference. And so Cliff, as we know, is going, so do I have a motion to appoint Cliff as our, I should probably explain what happens. At this conference, there are some, what do they call them? References? What do they call those things that we vote on at the conference?
Yeah, I'm not.
They're kind of, they're kind of priorities. They're priorities that the state and school committees kind of associate that will be their priorities for the following year. And so in this delegate assembly, every school committee has one delegate, and that delegate will vote yea or nay on these, each of these priorities as they're read and discussed. And the delegates have a chance to speak on them if they like. So that's what we're talking about. So, and Cliff, if he's voted in for Berlin, and also voted in for the region, he'll actually have two votes, and actually have to raise both hands.
You did once before.
So that, yeah, that's kind of how, what we're talking about tonight. Okay? So do I have a motion to appoint Cliff to be the Berlin School Committee delegate at the November conference?
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make Cliff, because I've got it.
All right, all those in favor? Great, thanks. Next, we wanted to schedule the. Next, we wanted to schedule the building walkthrough. I don't know what's going, you said the boiler's going to be done next week supposedly?
We'll do John for guidance.
Oh, I am, I will say this, Tuesday nights for me are the best nights that I'm at your disposal.
Did you say Tuesday minutes? Finally night.
Anytime after four.
Anytime after four, that's right. Yeah, but it's, you know, I think probably your schedules are harder to coordinate than mine. Kids go home at 3:15.
I have an evening commitment in Boston, so as long as it was before five, I'd be all right.
Which day are we talking about?
September 19th.
Can we do it in October? Is that worse?
Yeah, only because of the search process.
Oh, okay, okay, let's keep it, sorry.
Six nights for that.
I truly am, if you want a different day.
What about Tuesday for you?
What are Tuesdays for you?
Tuesdays.
Jam on, speaking.
Tuesday would be fine for me, which one, oh, which day?
Right.
What would be the earliest day?
Well, at this time, the earliest Tuesday for me, it would be Tuesday, probably the 26th would be the, well, no, actually the 3rd, I'm sorry, the 3rd. Octo- October the 3rd would be the soonest Tuesday I could.
And we have a try, we have a, do we have a meeting on the 3rd already? Yes, thank you.
Yes, you do.
What about the morning?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, can we do morning?
Yeah, any morning.
That one morning is good for you, that would be perfect.
Tuesday morning?
Tuesday morning.
Well, any day.
We go to mornings.
Okay, well, is, is that's going to be, is that going to be a one-time?
Yeah, one-time thing.
Okay, one-time thing, I can do, I can take off 3rd.
On the 3rd?
I can take off October the 3rd.
October the 3rd? Is that good for you?
In the morning, I can do that, I can.
I put you in that, you know, you wanted to avoid October.
Well, it's okay, it's in the morning. What's your time chart?
Um, let's hope the kids get in instead of 9:15.
October 3rd, 9:15, does that work?
Do we do 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock, sure.
9 o'clock?
9 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, October 3rd, 9 o'clock.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
No, at the elementary school.
At the elementary school, okay.
Could we see if the facility, Scott could be there too?
I can ask Steve, yep.
Good, good suggestion, Angela.
Okay, that's it for Berlin.
You want to see that boil up cranking?
Yes, we do.
I'm all about it.
Okay, um, the Boylston School Committee, I believe that's what this is doing.
Student teachers?
Student teacher votes.
I believe that was, that was in happening, laid out, but I believe that was the information on the student nurses that are coming to work with Fane. Did you get that in your packet?
I looked, I didn't see it, but it could be.
I don't see it on the drive, but.
I'm, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I think the, like, we talked about the student teachers.
It's, as it relates to the nurse, the subject, we did see that before the, whatever meeting, well, it couldn't have been the last one because I wasn't here, so it had to be prior to that.
If I may, Angela wanted, you wanted to vote on, to approve the description from the last meeting that Berlin didn't vote on?
For the, for the student nurse?
What description is that?
Okay.
Wasn't litter, were there litters?
That was just the first reading, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. I can't put my finger on what that was, but I remember seeing it and it was the first reading. And I believe it was the meeting before last. Okay, is there another issue?
Next meeting.
So Boyle, the Boylston is just, it's the nurses that come in every year and do some of the routine screenings with Fane. They work with her from Mass College of Pharmacy, I believe it is. And they come in and they run some of the height and weight and all of those screenings, vision screenings with her under the direction of they're, one of their professors.
Do you need a vote sooner rather than the next meeting?
I think we do, right?
Yeah.
So I think we just need approval to let them, to work with Fane.
When, I don't want to be nitpicky, when we typically approve student teachers, there's a form?
Right, there was a packet of forms, this, as I said, this was added late, but I'm not seeing the packet here of all the student forms. They've all been Corey-checked. And I'm not sure why that's not in there. Would you prefer to wait until you've seen that?
I think I have it in electronic copy, if you want me to mail it to you right now.
Okay.
Let me just.
This stapled? Now, these are individual ones for each student. Oh, they're on there? So it's in your packet, that's it.
Do you happen to, do you want me to email it?
Oh, okay, I see why. So it's the one that looks like this on top, that's why I wasn't, sure.
Well, we don't, we don't have that.
Don't have the paperwork, but I mean, it's in the file.
I'm not seeing it, but.
Want to come back to that later in the meeting? We'll pass over it. But it sounds like you need it, you need the approval.
We do, they've, they've all been Corey-checked and all have filled out the forms. So we have them all here, I can certainly pass them out. They're not in the electronic folder either. I, I know Cheryl added this late, so maybe that was just a mistake that we didn't get it all. But I can certainly pass the packet around, if you want to take a look at it.
And I did just email you guys a scanned copy of them. I didn't have your BBRSD account in there, so I think it went to your Gmail.
Again, you want to move to the beginning?
What's your pleasure, Chair?
Well, since the, the school system needs this approval so they can move forward with the program.
Okay.
But I don't chair the Boylston School Committee.
It's just Boylston?
It's just Boylston.
Okay. So I move that we approve the student teachers to work with Fane Sullivan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get that, Deborah? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Boylston. Next on my list, I'm working with three different agendas here, I keep getting lost, but I believe for, it's the regional committee and we need to do an execution of the agreement between the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District and the Tohoto Regional Teachers Association that covers the period September 1st, 2017 to August 3rd, 2012.
2020.
2020. What's involved in the execution?
My understanding is that it's already been signed by the union and it just needs to be signed by the Chair, I believe. We looked at this this afternoon, I apologize, but who needed to sign this? No, it's the whole committee, everybody needs to sign it. So there's two copies.
So these two copies of the contract will be passed around and everyone is asked to sign it. Do you want to do that at the end of the meeting?
Is there a required voter or anything, or did we already vote to approve?
My understanding is you've already voted and this is just a signature.
Two sessions ago, I think we did.
Yeah. It's been kicking around for a while with some formatting and, okay.
All right. Now we need to select a delegate for the MASC, M A S S Joint Conference. I need a motion.
A motion that we appoint Cliff as our delegate for the region.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes?
I'm glad you're going, Cliff.
Thank you. Glad to go. Laurie, you're up next.
I am. I actually have a handout. What's coming around is a newsletter for the Regionalization Exploratory Committee. It's our, this has been kicking around for a little while too, and I think as of tonight, I think we're hopefully finalized. If you do see something egregious, let me know and we'll certainly fix it. These will be going out via school messenger. Thank you, principals, for offering to do that. We will also be looking for other ways to convey this, to put it on Berlin's Facebook page, to share social media and that kind of thing. The approach of the subcommittee was to keep this very kind of brief and kind of, there are no definitive answers at this point. What we really wanted to do was share a little bit of a glimpse of what the committee's doing and what we're concerned about and what kinds of questions we're analyzing. So we thought for this first one, the governance issue would be a good one for people to see what the law says, the various options for school committee selection under a regionalized agreement, and then of those options, what direction this school committee is leaning or advising. But we're also seeking feedback from the community on that. I do have one request. I received an email from one of the attendees of the subcommittee who is a Berlin teacher. I thought there were two Berlin teachers kind of filling in for each other. They've indicated to me they're both interested in serving on the subcommittee. I, my personal feeling is if they want to be there, I really want them there. And if it comes down to a need to vote, I think they'd be willing to split a vote so that it's not creating any kind of imbalance. We also could offer Boylston the same opportunity if there were two teachers from Boylston that wanted to attend. But I think having folks who want to be in this discussion is really positive. So I, we do need, Cliff, for you to appoint Betsy Trudeau from BMS to the exploratory subcommittee. Molly Lingalier's already on it, but she and Betsy both would like to serve.
Do you have the spelling of the names?
T R U D E A U.
And D E T S Y.
Well, then, if that's the recommendation of the committee, then appoint her to the committee.
Great, thank you. The next meeting of this group is this Thursday at 7:15 here in this room. At our last meeting, one of the agenda items was we asked for volunteers to make some calls to other districts as part of our research. And I, a couple of people, Nadine and Mike DeBrew, got together ahead of time and did some questions so that everybody could sort of come at it, asking the same questions. The thought we had at the time was that we'd bring those questions back to the full committee, but this is a high-performing committee, so one of the folks has already done her research and it's phenomenal. It is such interesting information. Hamira shared her materials from talking with the superintendent at Chatham, is it called Manamoy? What is, is that right? Monamoy? But that person, I guess, had already been also involved in Lincoln Sudbury in regionalization efforts, so there was a tremendous amount of perspective. They shared their regional agreement as well. So, and we have a number of other folks who are also going to be completing similar assignments, so that's incredibly helpful information for us. The last item I have is, we had committed at our last meeting to have people from the exploratory group cover each of the open houses. I'm planning on going to Berlin tomorrow, but I'm going to be late and I'm wondering if someone else from the exploratory committee, are you?
I, I can go, but I can be there at the beginning.
Okay, and then we'll switch off?
Sounds good.
Okay. And my thought is I'll bring hard copies of the newsletter that we can hand out.
How will I get them, how will I get them?
That's a really good question.
Someone can send it to me.
Do you want to print some out?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a color printer?
I do indeed. And it works.
All right, I'll do that. I also.
It's going on our messenger, we don't need a bunch, just.
Right, just, I mean, I think if people haven't seen it yet, or, I think it's good to have a few. BES is September 19th and I'm hoping Matt's going to be, I cannot do that one at all.
I can be there early.
Okay.
I will be there early anyways, right? Let's get a walk.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. And then Tohoto is October 5th.
Same, sorry, same, same plan for the printing of the.
Yeah, absolutely, send it my way.
Great. Diane, I'll bring some.
Okay. Why don't you like us to send these out of school messenger? Okay, school messenger?
I, there have been two or three versions floating around, so I just tried to delete those and put the latest version in the drive, in the Google Drive. Why don't I email it to you so there's no question on anybody's part? I'll email the final tomorrow to all three of you. And Karen, I'll send it to you and Cheryl, just so that we're all clear which one is the final. Bob actually made a great suggestion today that I was able to incorporate and I also added in, actually, maybe not. The version that's on the drive has Molly and Betsy. The version you're looking at just has Molly on the thing, so we'll send out the new one.
Does he have another version?
Well, the version that has that is in the Google Drive. It's just what was printed earlier came out without it.
It looks great, you did a nice job. So do you want it to come out and go out by messenger this week?
Yes.
Like maybe Friday, we'll send it out? You will coordinate the time?
Sure. And Ken, I'll send you a newer version. I think that's all I have. Bob is working very, very hard on financial scenarios and modeling and we're looking at that. I think it's going to take us a little while. I don't think we're going to be ready this Thursday to talk a lot about scenarios, but there's some really good work being done and we're hopeful that we can get some expert advice as well.
More work to do. We'll get there.
That's it?
As always, the committee is doing excellent work.
It's a really good committee. It's a really good committee.
Thank you, all members of the committee. I'm going to take the privilege of the chair to adjust the order of the business items. I would like to do the appointing of the superintendent search screening committee and then move after that to the superintendent's search so that Dorothy can do a presentation because the appointment is very fast and simple today. So, committee members, we've had a tremendous generous response towards working on the screening committee. We have managed to find all the people we need for all of the slots, even though they've all gotten a letter afterwards telling them what it means they're going to have to do. No one just runs screening in the room, so that's a good thing. So tonight I would just like to appoint the following people to the superintendent's screening committee. We have three parents, first of all. If I mispronounce anyone's name, I apologize in the news. We have Tracy Freitas from BMS, Lori Hart from BES, we have Jay Rocha from Tohato. We have three teachers. We have Deborah Ashen Haddas from Ulysses, Arhat from BMS, Tara Kozia from BES, and Natalie Adams from Tohato. Our principal representative will be Diane Tusserey from Tohato. Our central office administrator will be Karen Molnar, PPS director and interim superintendent. We have two community representatives appointed by the select boards in each town. Christine Keefe will be representing Berlin, and Michael May will be representing Boylston. And the two school committee members are myself and Jen Spencer. And so I appoint all of these people to the committee and thank them in advance for the generosity and the hard work they're going to put into this process. I'm very encouraged by the response we've received and grateful. All right, next, we want to talk about superintendent search.
What would you like me?
We don't have... Since we have a chair, there are already...
Good evening.
Good evening.
There are a couple of things I'd like to go over with you tonight. One is just to give you a couple of quick updates on the search for permanent superintendent. I brought, unfortunately, I'm not sure enough copies of the brochure that was printed and is circulating. We are getting applications. I never like to tell you how many we have because I can guarantee you that it will double, triple, quadruple, and be a good number the last few days before the deadline. I did notice that there have been 108 responses to the survey, and they almost all came on the same day, which says to me that was the day that people knew there was the survey online. So you might want to put out another reminder that the survey is out there. Usually every time there's a reminder, there's an uptick in the number of surveys that are completed.
May I interrupt? Is there any way the principals at their open houses? Because we only have to, I mean, when's the surveys?
Let's see, the survey...
Did we pass the deadline already?
No, 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 it's still open. But what's, actually, it wasn't until close Friday, but we could leave it open a little longer if you wanted to.
All right. So principals, if you can nudge people and remind them, that'd be great.
Okay. And then the other thing I believe we wanted to talk about tonight was interim superintendent?
Yes.
So just very in a broad overview, and I'll answer any questions you have, there are three options. One would be to use, to take advantage of internal people who would be willing to step into the role for a while. The other is to have someone come in who's essentially retired superintendent, who could fill in the role temporarily. Or the third option would be someone who would be interested eventually in being considered for the permanent position. So someone who would be, who is not working right now and would be eligible to step into that role if they were selected. I have talked to several different people, and there are three people who have expressed interest as external people to fill the position. The first one is Joe Conley, who I believe has been an interim superintendent here in the past and an interim business manager in one of the communities. Joe said he really enjoyed his time here. He'd be happy to come back and help. He does have an obligation one day a week on Thursdays. He's mentoring a business manager in another district. So he would be able to be here four days a week. Patty Grenier is another retired superintendent, well experienced. She, I think she retired in 2011. She has continued to be active working on the new superintendent induction program. So it's not like she retired in 2011 and she's rusty over the past six years. She said she would be happy to help. She said she already has a planned vacation in mid to late October. So that, she said the vacation is about 10 days, or some of those days are weekends. So she would, there would be a time when she couldn't be here. And the other person is Dr. Glenn Brandt, who is, was formerly the superintendent in acting motzboro, and is someone who is not working as a superintendent right now, not retired, and maybe someone who would be interested in stepping into the permanent position. I have copies of resumes. I think you had copies given to you in your packet already. I have extra copies if you want them. So, so I guess you have a decision of if you want to go the route of having someone outside come in that, or stick with the person who's your acting superintendent as the inside person. And then I would suggest maybe you want to have these people come in for an interview so you can get to know them a little bit and decide your course of action.
All right, committee members. What are your thoughts? I, I would share that I had envisioned a process where we would hopefully have a number of people who would express interest in the position. And we would then perhaps have a subgroup that would look through those, select a couple...
Mm-hmm.
And have them come in the interview publicly.
You could certainly do that. If you wanted to bring the three down to two, or you could have all three come in.
From a timeline perspective, just understanding of timeline, we're talking about the timeframe between now, for lack of better terms, and November 1st?
Hopefully November 1st, that we sort of had November 1st...
Or start date up so higher.
Yeah. I think, I think our discussion was that November 1st might be a little unrealistic for a start date for the permanent superintendent, that the search would be completed around that time, but it would, January, around January 1st start date was a little bit more realistic.
So I'm, I'm a little confused, and I'm sorry, I might have missed something along the way. Is there, Karen, is Karen unable or uninterested in serving in the interim role until November 1st or December or whatever? Is there a prohibition for you in doing that somewhere?
I think there's just a lot of options. It's whether you choose to put in somebody who's full-time for the superintendent while we're looking for someone. My understanding is that it's going to be beyond the search process. There's probably going to be somebody who's already a sitting superintendent, and we're talking about maybe another 120 days notice that they have to give until they come here. So I think we're willing to do whatever the committee wants. I think she's just giving us options at this point.
So the timing I can understand. And from a point of view of disruption, it feels disruptive to me to have an interim and then spend energy and time figuring out who another interim could be at the same time we're trying to recruit for the permanent, unless all three, those interims were potentially candidates for the, of which you said one was.
I think, I agree with you 100%. I think the challenge that we were faced with was the fast change of Nadine's choice to when she was going to leave, right? So I think that's what has created sort of the challenge that we're in, right? I was going to suggest if, you know, I would lean towards, and I wasn't going to put Karen on the spot, but I would lean towards the less disruption as well. But I didn't want to put Karen on the spot in terms of in the meeting as having to have that discussion. So I think in my opinion...
But I had no problem doing it. Sorry, Karen.
My, I was, you know, in my opinion, I was going to agree with you that option one seemed like a good choice for everybody as it relates to getting to the next point. The only, and then the other thing I was going to add is with the candidate who is interested in the long-term position, I would like to, in my personal opinion, I would want to interview that person as a long-term position, not as an interim, move to long-term position. And if we didn't, if Karen did not decide to stay on, I would lean more towards one of the two folks who are going into it as being an interim and understanding that process, which would allow us to, I think it would be hard to interview for a permanent superintendent while we have one who's in the position interviewing for the position. I just don't think that's the right way to go about it. That would be my...
I was wondering if it wouldn't be less disruptive to get an interim superintendent who was interested in the long term. Because then that would seem to me to be doing a couple, you know, taking care of one thing while taking care of another, you know, and making it more of a smooth transition. I was picturing that as a smoother transition. That's all. I thought option three was...
So Dorothy, what's...
Well, now, I mean, that would depend on if that, I mean, you, so you have one person who would be an interim and perhaps applying for the position along with perhaps 30 other people. So, you know, in a way it would give that person sort of an audition, but it wouldn't necessarily at all mean that that's the person that you would end up having for the permanent position.
Is it, is it possible to think about an interim after you've interviewed and selected your potential permanent candidate? I'm just wondering if a permanent candidate might not want to start until January. Maybe they want to start in the summer. And if it, we, does that happen? Would it make more sense to hire an interim at that point so Karen doesn't have to do double duty all year long, but we have an interim from November to, to whenever the person starts? To June 30th, there would be a start date of the person?
Some of, some of the thinking around the timeline was that you wanted to select the person you wanted and not have it too dependent on the start date. So what you say actually is a possibility. And if you had an internal person who is willing to do it up until the point where you knew the start date of the permanent, that might be a way to have the least disruption.
Karen, is there...
I was just going to say, excuse me, but I was going to say, it could be that a candidate is ready and is able, but we're assuming they'd have to give notice, but they might be, there might be somebody that would be ready to start pretty soon, and then we wouldn't have to go through that whole process if we wait till after the interviews are completed.
That is correct. That is correct.
The other question is, is there a need to do some backfill that enables you to serve in the role, but provide some support around the work that you do?
I think everybody's already doing that backfill. We have this incredible team that just step up, and we're already meeting regularly. They're already doing a lot. Cheryl Nelson is filling in. So at this point, I think we have the supports in place. We just kind of work it out all together.
So then I wonder what, I guess the question then is, what has left the least disruptive to say? The staff, right? Is it to make that change again to someone who they know is going to be temporary, or to try to work as it is today and look for a position? And once we hire that person and we decide, we understand what their start date is, then maybe we take your advice and we say, okay, Karen, is there something you want to do for the next six months? Because that's what it's going to take. And all right, what's the, to your point, Lori, what's the backfill? Or no, you want to go back to your, your current role and we put in a, and we look at one of these candidates who expect to be interim superintendents, right?
So it's a good suggestion. Clearly, committee members are interested in it. So procedurally, I feel like at a loss how to handle this. Thanks for throwing...
Honestly, it's hard to, without understanding where Karen is at, it really is hard to sort of, well, the committee's job tonight would be to decide what the processes they're going to use. Then there would have to be a process to deal with what the decision is. We don't do that publicly at this meeting. What we would do is we make the decision, how are we going to handle it? What is our conceptual model? And then we have to do the work to fill in that.
So I think what we've kind of, I, what I heard the group leaning towards is that we do not pursue an interim at this time. We continue aggressively searching for a permanent. And at some point, some defined point, either when someone's hired and they have a notice to give, or if we haven't found the ideal candidate, then we revisit this discussion around the need for an interim. And it looks like we have three great candidates at that point, if Karen is unable to...
Assuming that, yeah, assuming that Karen is...
Yeah, if Karen is unable to...
Assuming that Karen works at Karen, I, that would be my, I, that's what I would vote for.
Is that the consensus?
Karen, are you comfortable with that?
I am. I actually think it would be more disruptive for us right now to have a couple of different people changing. So if we, once we're through the interviews, we'll know what we're looking at, and then I think you'd be able to make a better decision.
Yeah. Okay. Are you comfortable with that, Cliff?
Oh, I'm comfortable with that. I, I, it's the will of the committee. I'll be comfortable. As long as the committee has clarity, knows where they want to go, then that's what we will do. Does that sound like a plan, Dorothy?
It sounds like a plan. I would say if that is really what your decision is, that you hold to make Karen the interim so that there's absolutely no question about who has the authority.
Well...
Yeah, she is currently an interim. She is the interim.
All right.
She wasn't just sitting in that chair.
The committee went until I went away on vacation, then... No. So yes, Karen is our interim superintendent currently.
Well, congratulations.
And we now have a plan.
Sounds great. There is, if you don't mind, if I'm going back to the permanent search for one more second, there's one thing I want to mention. So I, you've appointed your search committee. The other thing that I will need to be able to do when the first time the search committee meets is give them their charge from you. Typically, your charge would involve how many candidates we'd like them to bring forward. Usually it's three to five, the number of finalists that they would bring forward to the committee, knowing that they wouldn't want to be superintendent, that they, not to meet a number, but candidates that they feel would be qualified to be superintendent. And the other decision that's usually the committee might want to weigh in on is if there are any internal candidates or if there are any members of Berlin or Boylston who apply, do they get automatically a courtesy interview, or are they just part of the pool and evaluated, you know, evaluated as part of the larger pool?
Okay, so those are the decisions we would make tonight by consensus?
Yes.
Okay, so let's tackle the first one, which I believe is the number of candidates to move forward that the screening committee would recommend.
So each person, the screening committee will make a recommendation based on resumes of X amount?
So usually what happens in the screening committee is they look at all the applications. They decide on who they want to bring in to interview. And after they've interviewed those people, they take a vote on who the slate they would bring forward as...
Okay, all right, I misunderstood yourself. Okay, thank you.
So the question is like, what would be the, it sounds like a range. What would be the minimum number of candidates the school committee would want brought forward to be interviewed and to explore? And what the maximum number would be that you would want to interview and explore? And what the maximum number would be that you would want to interview and explore?
From my point of view, less is more. I, I would say three is a good number, both min and max.
Okay.
There is sometimes, just to, you know, sometimes there is a possibility that a finalist will drop out, will decide not to go forward.
So that would be a reason to have a big... What do you recommend?
Three to five.
And you let it decide?
Yeah, we don't want to...
Oh, they could, they could bring then as few as three, or as many as...
And you're talking about the candidates that the school committee actually interview? The screening committee will interview certain amount?
The screening committee can...
As many as they want?
As many as they want.
Okay.
Yes. And those, the school committee interviews are typically done in one meeting, or multiple meetings?
That is up to you. Uh, it's done both ways. Sometimes, the, the candidates will all come here for a site visit, so they'll have the opportunity to tour the schools and talk to staff, talk to parents. Sometimes school committees interview them at the end of that day, a little bit of an audition of how they handle a long day. Uh, and sometimes they do the site visit, and then all the candidates come back and want even for an interview. That's totally up to you.
Another reason to think about the number that you want to interview.
Yeah, five would be a long meeting.
Five would be a long meeting.
I mean, we're just saying three to five, right? So, I don't, I wouldn't want to interest, right? Because if we came up with four that we thought were great candidates, I don't want to keep us from not being able to bring four, but if it's only three, we only bring three, right? You're saying three to five, so...
Three to five is fine.
What if the committee only recommended two?
They need more candidates.
So that's, that's a great question, do we, if we say three to five, do we have to bring three? Or we say we...
They would aim for three. If they really felt like there were not three people in the pool that they felt would be qualified to be a superintendent here, then they would, they would bring two.
The problem with two would be if, sometimes when you're gonna go public, right? It's when somebody drops out.
Yeah.
And then we're left with one.
Then you're left with one, and then you probably start that tour.
Yeah. I don't know, I think the three to five sounds a good zone, and it allows flexibility. What does the committee members think? Angela? Yeah? Jim?
Yes. Agreed.
Okay, we're agreed, three to five. I forget what the second question was.
Yes, there was a second question.
Internal?
Internal, and, um, people who live in the community.
Whether they would...
Whether they would automatically be interviewed.
By the screening committee?
By the screening committee, yes, by the screening committee.
If they meet the qualifications?
If they meet the quali, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So just residency or internal wouldn't guarantee you an interview unless you've had all the requirements?
Correct, correct. And it wouldn't guarantee you an interview if you say, "No, everybody's thrown into the pool equally." So that's your, you know, do you give, do you give preference to those categories, or do you say everybody's equal?
So what are your thoughts about that, Angela?
I, I think it's fine to give a, an automatic interview to a Berlin or Boylston resident and an internal person for the screening committee.
Okay. I see Lori nodding, that's a yes?
I, I agree.
Ed?
I agree.
Jim?
Disagree. I think if the person is qualified, they're gonna get themselves into the mix anyways. So to say that we're gonna give an automatic bid, I don't think is an appropriate way to look at it. I think if there is someone here who's qualified internally, they're gonna get themselves in there anyways.
That's fine, too, I agree with that as well.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's again, it falls back to my statement earlier too about wanting someone who is in the, who would like the long-term position to be in the interim. I don't think that's in the best interest of an interview process and a fair evaluation for anybody. So fair to the staff, it's not fair to the school committee who has to evaluate it now under different circumstances. I just think there's no reason to overcomplicate it if the person is qualified, though.
I think... No, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay.
I think the reasons that, because we face this decision at work all the time too, do we give courtesy interviews to internal? And honestly, we do. And it's more about how you treat people, how people within the district may feel valued and respected. And it's not, it's, truthfully, it's not giving them any advantage over anyone else. It's just saying, you know, "You're a part of this family, you deserve the courtesy of an interview." I, I think that's the rationale. I don't think it's meant to give people any kind of advantage, and I don't think it offsets qualifications and everything else. But I do think it's a courtesy and a sign of respect internally. That's, that's just what I've observed in my organization.
Okay.
Again, I think it's, I'm okay with either way we go on this, I'm just, it was just my opinion. I actually think it's a good thing either way, but...
I, I think your point is well taken, though, Jim, that we're, you know, we, we've set the standard for ourselves to find the very best candidate that we can. And if an internal candidate or member of the community is a candidate, and they're not the very best candidate, then we shouldn't be choosing them. But we should give them an opportunity to prove that they can be the very best candidate. So what have we decided? We're going to...
Can you vote on?
Well, normally we try to do consensus.
If everybody feels, if the, if the majority of the committee feels strongly with the interview, then I'm not gonna, I don't, I wouldn't let my opinion get in the way of going against that. I, I still believe we shouldn't, my decision would be not to do that, but, but I'm not gonna stand in the way if that, if that is the decision.
Okay. So we do have consensus, then?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Did, I mean, did Ed say?
Yeah, Ed, Ed did, yes. Okay.
And the one thing I don't know is where the screening committee meetings will be held.
Well, hold, wait one second, wait one second, before we go too far. Bertha, do you have any advice and/or experience with committees who have made that decision on the folks internally?
I've, I've done searches where it's gone both ways, and...
See, that's right in the way, like, you...
However, I can tell you that the, the search committees were, did not, once they had the interview, they didn't, I have had, not had experience where someone has pushed to move someone forward, they didn't feel they were qualified just because they were internal or a member of the...
So do you feel that, because Lori brought up a, a lot of excellent points, and I agree with her, and I, I work in the corporate world as well, and that's, I work in a very similar environment. And yes, it's definitely looked at the way that you're describing, I would agree with that. So I think, Lori brings up a lot of great pros far, do you feel the pros outweigh the cons as it relates to a decision on that aspect?
I think the pros probably outweigh the cons.
I feel more comfortable now.
And that's what we're looking for.
No, I just, that's why, hey, she's here to help us, so I figured she could, we'll let her...
Exactly.
Answer the questions.
Exactly, good. Alright, so now you have your direction.
Now, yes.
And, um, we've requested the meetings be held here, if that's possible? Good. If that answered your question, or somebody's question?
That was my question.
Okay.
So I think so...
Do you need anything else from us?
I don't believe I do.
Well, I want to thank you for coming out tonight.
Well, you're very welcome.
We appreciate it. You've been a great source of help in this process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Some of you will be seeing a lot more of me before the end of the month.
Yeah, in the month of October, we'll be real tight. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is school committee comments and future agenda items. Do we have any of those? No. Alright, thank you, Diana.
I just was wondering, are we, were we going to set up a new date for the policy committee meeting?
Right, the policy subcommittee meeting got changed.
It was canceled for yesterday. Yesterday, we were gonna have a meeting, it was canceled. I was told by Cheryl Nelson that a new date would be set tonight, but maybe I misunderstood that.
I don't think it was planned for tonight, but I do think we need to set a new date. Is it, are you, do you have a new one?
Two of us, yeah. And I, it's definitely, Ed's schedule is more challenging than mine, so I would definitely work with that first. And then I'll work to accommodate.
Better off on Mondays, Mondays are better for me. In general, I can make Monday every...
During the day?
During the day, yeah. For a evening?
Monday, during the day on Monday would be fantastic for me.
During the day? What do you want to do on Monday?
Monday evenings would be...
Monday evening, okay.
Monday is tough, Monday during the day is good.
Monday during the day is good?
Yes, during the day is good.
During the day is fine, I think it was originally set for four o'clock.
Is that time good?
We can do earlier on Monday, that'd be better for Friday.
Is that okay for you, Ed?
Yeah, earlier would be good, actually, actually, no, I mean, how was it, two o'clock, one o'clock?
One o'clock would work.
One o'clock to eat, and, you know, but...
One o'clock on the eighteenth, that's...
You know, something that would work, even though my daughter's birthday that day, she's not gonna be home from school until...
Just to lighten up your mood.
But one o'clock next week could be fun.
The eighteenth, okay, one o'clock on the eighteenth. September eighteenth?
Oh, we gotta do it September eighteenth, alright.
That's next week.
Can we do the next week? I can't do, I can't do one o'clock that Monday. Monday the twenty-fifth, by the way, that Monday we'll do.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Okay, is there any other, uh, do you have any other comments? Alright, this, uh, school committee, um, needs to go into executive session at this time, um, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union. And we will reconvene after this. So we're gonna go into executive session.
Is this just for the region? I mean, can we close out the elementary school districts?
Well, can we?
Yes.
Yes.
Region business, right?
We gotta do the voting, thanks.
Shall we close the elementary schools?
Why don't we close the elementary schools first?
Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn the Berlin School Committee?
Ed?
Say so moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye. Can I have a motion to close the Boylston?
So moved.
Second?
Second? I'll go aye.
Don't do that either. Aye.
Alright, so those two are closed. So we need a vote to go into executive session.
Aye.
This is a reasonable, we need to...
Angela says aye. Aye.
Maybe Ed?
Here, you can aye now.
Ed, aye. Lori? Lori?
Aye.
Thank you. And you're all free.